It is nine o'clock, nine o'clock time to convene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners for April 20. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone and also please silence your cell phones or turn them off. And I'd also like for the commissioners to do the same thing. We've already had our 8:30 Board of Equalization Review Meeting. We adjourned it and I will call this meeting to order. Invocation, Mr. Barbara, Commissioner Barbara Aicott.
Let's power here, please. My heavenly Father, please offer us the guidance today to do what is right for Wayne County. We also thank you for the people who are here today to receive their pins for dedication to Wayne County. We also pray for the COVID-19 victims all over the world and also in our county and pray that the healing process will start so we can move along with our dedication of living. Thank you, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge, Commissioner Foster.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Aicott and Commissioner Foster. Approval of the minutes, Ms. Honeycutt.
Yes, sir. If there's any discussion of changes to the minutes.
Ms. Chairman, a move that we approve the minutes of April 6th. I have a motion on the floor that we approve the minutes of April 6th. Any discussion? If none, I'll show favor, sign of right hand in favor. Any opposed? Thank you.
I'd like, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we remove the presence, the item that I presented for the discussion for registered deeds.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor that we move the session about discussion of registered deeds. Any discussion? If none, I'll show sign of right hand. All opposed? Do you get the count, Ms. Madam Clerk? Do you get the count?
No, I didn't because I can't see everybody's hand because of the model.
All in favor of removing it, show sign of right hand.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, we do have some adjustment, additional adjustment of the agenda if we can. Number one, we would like to do a special recognition of our 911 employee. It's a really good day for Wayne County 911 and Wayne County citizens and we want to do a special recognition for that. We also want to put her first so she can get to bed because she worked the night shift last night. So she's staying up just for us and we do appreciate that. And number two, we do have a proclamation for Girl Scout Gold Star Award recipients that we would like to put after the presentation by Ms. Will, the Marty Cheddar Proclamation. And we'll do that under Special Presentations.
Okay. Okay, let's.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else have any changes? Okay, let's do our special presentations.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a motion that we approved the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor, all in favor, show sign of right hand. Ms. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As the board is aware, we really recently started emergency medical dispatch within our 911 system. You don't know how important it is until you have an event happen like this in the last week or so. We've been in it less than a month, but we've had some really good news, good saves and good things that we're helping our citizens with that are really adding an additional layer of service onto them. And with that being said, I want to introduce Chris Barnes. Chris, if you want to. Oh, hey, Chris. Y'all come on, y'all come on up. Let Chris kind of tell you the background and we'll do the special recognition.
So, good morning, everyone. As Mr. Honeycutt says, we're less than a month here into EMD and already have some good news about how the system is already working for the citizens of Wayne County. Today, we'd like to present Kelsey Hookup. She's actually one of our assistant supervisors on shift. She really took to EMD and she got to help deliver her baby the other day. That's a baby boy. What we'd like to do from this point forward is present these telecommunicators that make these types of saves or help the citizens of Wayne County with a stork pin, in this case, that she can wear and be proud to wear as a, you know, just as a small token of our appreciation for the services that she provides. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Again, and I appreciate the board allowing us to do this first. She worked last night and was really gracious to come in this morning to be recognized, but it truly is a great service that we are providing. And, you know, now if they'll just name it after me, I'll be happy, so.
Joke time's over with.
Next, we do have a special presentation from Sheriff Larry M. Pierce, Michelle Bass, and Stephanie Brown on the Wayne County Detention Center Substance Misuse Program.
Good morning. Do you want me to pass out those booklets or do you?
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
For the last couple of years, we've been working on the program for our detention center and we were able to obtain a substantial grant for the county that came about and we were able to begin it actually this year. We had a application in for a grant with the Federal Government Bureau of Justice that totaled $900,000 over a three-year period and it was granted to us, so we were able to start this program. As you know, one of my jobs is to maintain the detention center. We put bad folks in jail, but there's also situations where people come to our jail that really don't need to be there. And that's a situation, a lot of times, when there's mental illness and a lot of mental illness is related to drug addiction and alcohol abuse. And nationwide sheriffs are facing a problem where we have a rotating door. Basically, the people come in, they go through withdrawal, they get out, they get back on the, their abuse of substance abuse, and then we see them again and it's just a rotating door right over and over. So with this program, we're looking to reduce recidivism in these areas. We're partnering with several agencies. We have Dustin Pittman here today with COM, Coalition for Abuse and Life Management. He's the chairman of that. Ms. Jennifer Heath, I think, is here with the Data Reporting Center. So we have a lot of partners in addition to that as well that we're partnering with. This program will actually help treat these people with medical medicine that we are allowed to and minister them through our Southern Health Partners. And once they begin this administration of drugs or medication, they will go, be able to go on to a program that will continue once they get out of jail. And so we're very excited about this. I'm going to, I'm going to let Michelle Bass, who is our jail navigator, explain the exact protocols of the program. And also, Ms. Stephanie Brown is here, who is our grant coordinator. They can give you a little bit more insight as to how things will be functioning. I will tell you this, I was in Bladen County this past weekend and somebody recognized me down there and they actually, this lady had a boyfriend in our jail. And she said, "I want to thank you for the program you're starting because he's so excited about being able to get help." Because a lot of people, unless they have insurance, they have no way of getting help. So again, it's just a track they're on they can't get off. So we're hoping through this program it will actually help them and help us as well as our county. So I'll turn it over to Michelle at this time.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you for your time this morning. In order to aid in understanding the Wayne County Detention Center Substance Misuse Program, I developed a flow chart that I'd like to review at this time. Yes, ma'am. You also have a copy of it in your booklet if for some reason it's hard to see on the screen. So at the time of booking, the Wayne County Detention Center officer will complete an initial intake. If substance misuse is not disclosed, then the person will go to regular population within the Wayne County Detention Center. They'll also be scheduled for an assessment with Southern Health Partners in 10 days. Southern Health Partners provides physical and medical history as well as behavioral health evaluations for all inmates that are booked within the Wayne County Detention Center. If at the time of initial intake substance misuse is disclosed, there are two avenues that will be created. One is that the inmate will be flagged for a priority assessment with Southern Health Partners. Southern Health Partners will complete a priority assessment within 24 hours and a detox protocol will be established. In the past, Southern Health Partners protocol or detox protocol has been ibuprofen, phenogren, Imodium, and clonidine. Now, the staff has been trained to offer medication-assisted treatment, which will offer Suboxone, a medication used to manage withdrawal of opioid use disorder. The second avenue that will be created is that our grant coordinator, Ms. Stephanie Brown, will be notified via a referral form. Her job is to serve as a liaison with all five partners and any others that ensue. For example, right now, we're talking with Wayne Community College to bring in workforce into the detention center to offer GED classes and to start training inmates so that they are prepared for the work environment once they're released. The grant coordinator will notify the Wayne County Health Department Overdose Prevention Coordinator. The Wayne County Health Department will serve to bridge a gap between in custody inmates and community-based treatment. So therefore, the Wayne County Health Department will notify One-to-One with Youth for Peer Support Specialists. One-to-One with Youth is a key component in assigning peer support specialists with those in recovery. The peer support specialist will contact the inmate within 24 hours to screen them for the program. If they do not want to voluntarily participate with the program, they're taken off of the participation list. But if they choose to voluntarily participate with the program, then they're scheduled for an intake and an assessment with One-to-One with Youth. They will do that if they're in the detention center or in the community. At the time of the assessment, a person-centered treatment plan is completed. Their progress towards their goals with the person-centered treatment plan determines their progress in the program. So once they have completed the person-centered treatment plan, that completes their participation with the program. If prior to their voluntary participation, they're released into the community, the peer support specialist will make an attempt to contact that person to see if they would still like to participate with the program. If that person is also released into the custody of Day Reporting Center, the services will continue along with the Day Reporting Center program. Are there any questions?
Ms. Bass, does most people want to come in today at this program? Do you have a percentage who accepts or who does not?
It's still very new, but at this point, a lot of the inmates that have been presented with the program are very receptive.
Yes, they, I like the program. Only question I have is the mental health side of it.
Yes, sir.
I see a lot about the substance misuse, but the mental health side, and I know they go, they go together. And I just wanted to see where you're addressing the mental health side of.
That's One-to-One with Youth. They will actually provide treatment, individual and group therapy in the detention center. And again, if they're released into the community, those services continue.
They're going to provide a service inside? And what about medications as far as the mental health side?
The medication is through Southern Health Partners.
Okay, so they're going to handle the medication and the?
They handle the Suboxone treatment, yes, sir.
Everything else as well. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I love the GED program. Educating is very important. Can you elaborate a little more on that?
What we're doing is we're identifying inmates that might potentially need a GED. Maybe they did not graduate from high school. We've just recently identified those inmates that are participating with the program. So they will receive a placement assessment to determine where their education level is at. And then Wayne Community College will actually go into the detention center, offer the placement, and start offering the classes in the detention center. And then the classes are also continued with Day Reporting Center. They're already set up with Day Reporting Center, which Ms. Jennifer Heath can probably talk about that if she chooses. But basically, anything they're doing in the detention center will continue in the community.
Would that be going through the grant as well that you guys have or is that different monies that will be used?
That's self-sustaining, so that's not going to have to come out of the grant funds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Ms. Bass.
Thank you so much.
Sheriff Pierce, thank y'all. This is wonderful.
Have you got anything else, Sheriff? Thank y'all for coming. Great job.
And one of the things we're really honored to do today as well is our Employee Service Awards. As the board is aware, through COVID, we've kind of held off on doing this due to the restrictions that were made. But now with loosening up, we still wanted our employees to know how much we appreciate them and how much we want to recognize them, especially in front of the board as well. So we have a very, very long list, but we do appreciate them coming. But I appreciate Kayla and Carol as well getting everything together.
We're not going to do as we've done before of having them line up just because of COVID protocols. They'll come in and just turn around and go back out the other way and that's the only way we can handle all of these and not have them in the same place. So coordinating with Mr. Brogdon out there, as soon as he starts letting people in. Ray, we're ready.
People call them by name from.
Yeah, so Tammy Alsbrook.
This is starting with what?
Okay, so I'm sorry, no, we're starting, hold up, just a second. We're starting with 20 years. My apologies, I told you I was going to tell you that. So what I'll need is for them to kind of pause. Are you Tammy Alsbrook? Wonderful.
We're lining up as the list comes down.
Pardon?
They're lined up as the list comes down.
Perfect. All right. So Tammy Alsbrook, DSS Child Support, 20 years. All right, Tammy White, Tax Department, 20 years.
Thank you.
All right, 15 years, sir. You might want to put the 20 right back, whether, or we're going to be in trouble. All right, do we have Veronica here? Veronica Wiggs?
Veronica.
Nope. All right. You're going to hate me, Craig. 10 years. Do we have, Michonne? Michonne Anthony? What's your name, sweetheart? Oh, you're, you're on my next page. Hold tight. We have, I know, it's crazy. Okay, Michonne Anthony, DSS Incom Maintenance?
This is 10?
These are 10, I'm sorry. Tynika? Cameron Crawford?
There's not that many out there, but anyway, this is the first thing.
Okay, do we have five-year people? Emily, I mean Elizabeth Smith? What is your name, ma'am?
I'm thinking on the second page.
You're on the second page, okay. All right, we'll grab a 15. We're going to do Ms. Amy over here. I'm sorry, just hold on to them. I don't know how else we're going to do this. Amy Lancaster, Tax Administration, 15 years. Yay! All right, you're Lakisha, Lakisha McCants, Facilities, one year. I see you now with those eyes.
Thank you.
All right.
Brittany Newsome, one year.
And I don't even know where you were. That's okay? Brittany, tell us where you were. Tax Department, Brittany, one year. Everybody's sold.
Maybe it's best they announce themselves.
Yeah, I do announce themselves.
All right, how many years you got, darling? You're 10. Let me find you, hold on. She's with Housekeeping, Facilities. She does an amazing job and she's somewhere under here. Gosh, only knows. Thank you, darling. It's going to be a five-year pin. Craig, I'm sorry, this is not working out like we hoped. Double that result, there we go. Come on in, Ms. Betty, how are you? Ms. Betty Bars, 10 years with Facilities.
Jane Golf, one year with Facility Service.
All right. Come on in.
Mary Bright, Detention Center, 25 years. Antonio Silva, Facility Service, one year. Thank you. Thank you. Donna, 25 years? Jennifer Heath, 10 years.
He's been on mapping department?
Kayla Thornton, Sheriff's Office, one year.
One year.
Carol, she said, "Oh, we in there, get all their begins."
All right, we'll get it from, get Kayla to get all those together. And I apologize, y'all, we tried our best to do this. Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
I especially apologize to you.
Five year, 10 years.
Well, he said we had a bunch out there, but we didn't have, we didn't do a lot.
You are sending the pins to those that did not attend, right?
Yes, sir. We will get that taken care of. Some of them are working. All right.
And now under number, next under Special Presentations, Motion to Approve Recognition Day for National Service Proclamation. And Carol, are you reading?
I am. Unfortunately, Ms. Delbro is stuck in jury duty and unable to be here, so she asked me to read this. And the work that they do is just phenomenal. She is truly an inspiration and a great mentor and a great volunteer in our county. So this is Wayne County Recognition Day for National Service, whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service is a federal agency that helps more than 5 million Americans improve their lives, improve the lives of their fellow citizens through service. And whereas the participants in AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps Seniors Program address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, counties, and nations, supporting veterans and military families, providing health services, and helping communities recover from natural disasters, including COVID-19. And whereas over 200 volunteers and service members serve Wayne County residents year round through the Wages Foster Grandparent and Senior Companion Programs. And whereas foster grandparents are role models, mentors, and friends to children with exceptional needs, the program provides a way for volunteers age 55 and over to stay active by serving children and youth in their communities. Foster grandparents help children learn to read and provide one-on-one tutoring in classroom settings and serve as mentors to at-risk children. And whereas senior companions makes a difference by providing assistance and friendship to adults who have difficulty with daily living tasks such as shopping or paying bills. Senior companions help these adults remain independent in their homes instead of having to move to more costly institutional care facilities. Senior companions give caretakers or caregivers much-needed time off from their duties, run errands, and often provide friendship for their clients. Now therefore be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners just hereby proclaim April 6, 2021, is Wayne County Recognition Day for National Service and commends this observance to our citizens. Obviously, this was a little late in getting in, but I still think that we can honor them every day.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have a motion to, we approve this resolution? So moved. I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? If none, show sign of right hand. Unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Next, Ms. Chairman, presentation by Ms. Emily Will.
She's not going to be here, so Ms. Donna.
Oh, Donna is going to do it. For Marty Cheddar and a motion to approve the Marty Cheddar Day Proclamation. And again, as we mentioned in the pre-agenda, it's been a difficult week for the staff here in Wayne County and how much Marty meant to everybody and how much he meant to the community as a whole, becoming the go-to guy if you needed to know anything about Wayne County. And I do want to thank Donna and the support that she gave Marty and the library and the entire library staff and just how they have really pulled together to come and recognize Marty. And with that said, I'll turn it over to you.
So I'd like to read the proclamation and then I'd like to thank you all for this recognition on behalf of Marty. Marty Cheddar Proclamation. Whereas Marty Cheddar was born in Lansing, Michigan, the son of Paul and Elaine Diana Cheddar, and moved with his family to Greenville in 1973. And whereas Marty began his career with the Wayne County Public Library in July 2013, serving with distinction as the local history librarian until his health no longer allowed him to do so. And whereas Marty obtained the following degrees: Bachelor of Arts in History, a Master's of Library Science, and a Master's of Public History. Whereas Marty is a recipient of the Distinguished Service Award, an Order of the Arrow from the Boy Scouts of America, and achieved the rank of- and achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. And whereas Marty's work prior to joining the staff at the Wayne County Public Library, included serving as the lead researcher with the Philmont Staff Association, resulting in his co-authoring a book highlighting the Philmont Ranger history. And whereas during his tenure at the Wayne County Public Library, Marty oversaw more than 15 public history projects that extensively explored Wayne County culture in baseball, gospel music, agriculture, Black history, the Dewey Brothers Foundry, and the Borden Manufacturing Company. And whereas engaging people to learn about their heritage and culture was a passion of Marty's, and combined with his training and oral history methodology resulted in his ability to masterfully collect and make available the stories of Wayne County citizens. And whereas Marty has been a friend, role model, and advisor to countless local citizens, and he is dearly missed at the library every day by one and all. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 20, 2021, as Marty Cheddar Day in Wayne County, North Carolina, this day, this 20th day of April, 2021.
I make the motion that we approve this proclamation on behalf of Marty.
I have a motion on the floor. To approve this resolution. All in favor, any discussion?
I just want to say, Ms. Phillips, you know, my contact with Marty was just, you know, on history because I'm a history bluff too. I mean, it was just amazing at the knowledge that he presented to the community and everything. He was just a fine example for the library and for Wayne County.
Thank you.
And I know he will truly be missed.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? I would like to say, and Donna knows, me and Marty were pretty close. He helped me on several projects. One that probably would have never happened if it hadn't been for Marty. But there's a national publication that's sent out bi-monthly. And I was asked to participate in an article in it. And it was really Marty's article because he, he put it together for me and just, and on, and the presentations he did on the Borden Manufacturing and Dewey Brothers. You know, as it says in the resolution, you know, Marty wasn't born here. I was, but Marty taught me things about Wayne County that I did not have a clue. And Marty loved Wayne County. And it didn't make any difference to him if you needed research done, it didn't make any difference if you were the wealthiest person in Wayne County or the most, less fortunate person in Wayne County. He just, he loved history. And thank you for all that you've done to support him and his sickness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a motion on the floor, all in favor, show sign of the right hand.
You have a unanimous vote, Madam Clerk.
I've never seen a lawyer that didn't want to speak. And I know, and I know Jeff was real close with Marty too. Do y'all, do y'all, do y'all have a few words that you'd like to say?
And Wayne, before Jeff comes up, could I, I just want to recognize Emily Will. She couldn't be here this morning, she's helping a friend. But we were at the city council meeting last night together where they also presented a proclamation in Marty's honor. So I'd like to thank Emily for the work she did on this on behalf of the Wayne County Historical Association, give her credit for doing that. Also to Craig and to the Board of Commissioners for recognizing Marty in this way. You're right, he wasn't from Wayne County, but clearly this became home to him. He loved this community, he loved the stories, he loved the people. And he wanted everybody's voice to be heard, and he did a most fine job in telling those stories, preserving those stories, and now making those available for infinity. So with that, I'll call Jeff and then I do have my board chair.
Any of y'all would like to say a few words?
I just want to say, I'm so, I'm so sorry for you losing, you know, a friend, a staff member. I know it's not easy, but you know, you're honoring him greatly and we appreciate that.
Thank you, and I appreciate you all doing this.
Thank you Chairman Acock, I'm usually asked not to speak, so I really appreciate the invite.
You're in my courtroom now.
And I'd like to follow up on what Commissioner Williams said about Ms. Phillips and the entire staff. You know, our courthouse is a family. And we've had our moments up here, as I've said before, we might fuss and fight, but we're, we are a family and we stick together when times are tough. We all step up and the library is just like that. The love of Marty and the love of Marty to the library staff and the citizens of Wayne County was unparalleled. I serve on the Friends of the Library Board. A lot of the programs that are brought to the community that Friends Group helps support. And Marty, I was just thrilled that Marty asked me to be involved in a couple of projects, particularly involving baseball and our heritage here in Wayne County. So thank y'all for this award on behalf of Marty. I know his father was wanting to get over here, had some delay, Paul Shutter, but they were very close. It wasn't a program Marty did, he went there and come over from Greenville and he's tended to him in his last days. So thank y'all on behalf of the Friends of the Library and just as a citizen of Wayne County.
Thank you sir.
Anyone else Donna?
Good morning, I'm the chairman of the Wayne County Library Advisory Board. And Marty and I had a very good relationship, I would say it was personal. Because he was the kind of person that if you did not be personal with him, you didn't know Marty. And he was the kind of person that history was the whole of Wayne County. It wasn't one aspect of Wayne County's history, it was all of Wayne County's history. He dug into the history of the African-American community, Hispanic community, and every community. He loved history. And if he did anything historically to offend you, it just hurt him to the core. He wanted to always please people and do his best. He will be missed, the present historian has some big shoes to fill. Because Marty left a footprint for Wayne County. We are on the right track in terms of history for Wayne County, and I hope that we'll stay there, thank you.
Thank you. That it? Okay, and thank, thank y'all again for, for taking care of Marty. Because he would have done the same for you. Thank y'all.
Thank you Chairman. Again, we added this next proclamation, 2021 Girl Scout Gold Award Recipients Proclamation. And I'll be glad to read it. Whereas the Girl Scouts of the United States of America is a youth organization for girls in the United States, founded by Juliet Gordon Low in 1912. And whereas the Girl Scouts prepares girls to empower themselves and promotes compassion, courage, confidence, character, leadership, entrepreneurship, and active citizenship through activities and earning badges by acquiring practical skills. And whereas the highest achievement within the Girl Scouts of the USA is by less than 6% of the eligible Girl Scouts is the Gold Award. And whereas Wayne County Girl Scouts are members of the North Carolina Coastal Pines. And whereas despite the challenges of the ongoing pandemic, several Wayne County Girl Scouts achieved the Gold Award through hard work, diligence, and being the dreamers and doers who make the world a better place. And whereas Kayla Pittman, Lucy Bland, Hannah Cox, Colleen Bunch, Anna Kate Weeks, Natalie Sly, and Tiffany Taylor are Gold Award recipients from Wayne County and deserve the recognition and praise of their community. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize and honor the 2021 Girl Scout Gold Award Recipients of Wayne County, this the 20th day of April, 2021.
Do I have a motion, we approve this resolution? I have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Is no discussion, all in favor, show sign of the right hand?
All opposed.
Motion carries unanimous, Madam Clerk.
And now Mr. Chairman, we'll go to unfinished business. The first thing will be the discussion of a comprehensive plan for preventing ongoing flooding throughout Wayne County at the request of Commissioner Bevyn Foster.
Yes, I spoke about this earlier in the pre-agenda. Basically just to start looking at what we can do to possibly prevent some of the flooding throughout Wayne County. Said earlier, history of Los Angeles, they, they were flooding for years and they came, brought some engineers down to look at it and now they don't, doesn't flood anymore. So I figured if they can do it there, I'm nowhere, not nowhere near that scale of a city or even a county, but we could do possibly something here. As Mr. Commissioner Gurley, I mean Commissioner Doctor spoke earlier about even just maintaining the ditches. You know, and a lot of places, I mean, some of these ditches haven't been dug out in 30, 40 years probably, you know, and it's no longer even a ditch anymore, it's built up so bad now, there's no water flowing or anything. So just looking at that, even in Dudley, hopefully, you know, sometimes people get stuck, they can't even leave their house, you know, trying to figure out how to build up some roads, make some different roads if possible, whatever they need to be. And, and, and you know, request some of those funds from our state to help, this is a state problem, it's just not a county problem, you know. Smithfield on down, you know, we're flooding in a lot of areas. So I think that it's just something that we can look at hopefully during our budget session to see how much it'll cost to bring engineers down and see what funds we have available for that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chairman. Yes sir. It's been, a couple of months ago, I think Assistant County Manager Chip Crumper, Commissioner Foster, myself, and Representative Bell rode a few places on the southern end of Goldsboro. Looked at some issues and then myself and Commissioner Foster and Representative Bell went more places, saw more issues in the city. Did speak with Representative Bell and Senator Perry this past week, they are running flood mitigation bills through the Senate and the House. Of course, you know, we won't know that until June, but far as the funding process, Chip's worked on some stuff as well, sent some stuff out not too long ago, about maybe we might have some, some money to, to do. Also, so Tillis and DC is supposed to be having some, working on some funding processes, I guess you'd say, for that same issue, which that's, you know, that would be a statewide deal for them, but I think we've got, we've kind of working on trying to make it, and we can get a plan together and like, I wasn't here, I'm sorry, I had to take the girls to school this morning, but DOT is overwhelmed. I mean, that far as, with no help. So I mean, we're kind of behind the eight ball with them because they don't have the, they don't have the help to actually do the work anymore. But we do have a, a issue, and the more impervious surface that we put out, the more building we do, there's less ground for the water to soak in. So we need to kind of realize that as we, we keep building, we need to keep some green space, you know. Thank you Mr. Chairman. Anyone else? I will make just a couple of comments. Commissioner Gurley mentioned DOT. I'm probably not the oldest in the room, but I'm close to it. I can remember as a child, the DOT had the manpower. They kept the road ditches clean. They would even, I forgot how far the footage was, but they would, they were responsible for keeping ditches on the, on private property that drained the ditches on the road to keep them open for, I mean, they would clean them out for a certain distance, I don't remember what it was. But you know, all of that's gone and, and when it rains, I mean, you know, ditches that we had 50 years ago are not ditches anymore. And it is an issue, but we've got to be better stewards of the land. I mean, we, you know, if we've got private ditches that need cleaning, we need to clean them. But thank y'all for bringing this up because it is a major issue.
Chairman, coming out, I'd like to make is that I think Wayne County has to depend on itself per se. We can't depend on the provinces of our representatives and our, our senators, arguing the federal ones. You know, this is an issue that we have here in Wayne County, unless adjusted in Wayne County, if we get federal or state funding, do so. But I think Chip, this is something that we really, really need to look into. But I think we need to look into it as we are going to get any help from outside.
Mr. Chairman, what else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I think it's overall a value with us addressing this issue. If we don't address this issue throughout the county, we're not going to have people to build. We're not going to have people to even continue to live here. Some people have already left here because of the flooding concerns with their elderly parents. So I think that it's a value in addressing this issue. It will attract more people to this county as well.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, and just wanted to mention to Chip, one of the things that may be an option to us to get some traction now is to refer this to our planning board. Refer us back to the planning board to look at our current ordinances as we talked about earlier, to see what options we may have. But also look and work with them to see if they have some suggestions about how we can move this, you know, issue forward and how we can begin addressing it as well. So that, that may be a good place to start and then let them get us back some information and some suggestions. And then we can go from there if that sounds like a feasible plan.
Well, that, that's a start, I mean, we all know and will admit, this will be a slow process.
Yes sir.
But at least talking about it is a starting point.
Right.
You know, and it may come to the, to the point that, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about it. But, but if we don't look at it and discuss it, you know, we'll never know.
And there may be some options that they come up with as well that we can look at implementing, you know, if we have to, you know, if we do get some of the ARP funding that, that we can look at. So it, you know, but it does carry a little bit of weight as well for that to be a request from the Board of Commissioners to have the planning board come and look at options and recommendations of how to move this forward.
And, and, and they're already looking at it basically because the plant that we approved today, you know, that was, the planning board is, is, is already looking at it, I mean, you know, and the developer, you know, has come in and done his due diligence. And so, you know, they're, the, the big picture that we're looking at, they may not be looking quite that far yet, but they, but they are already looking at it.
Right, and, and that's what, that we could ask them to, you know, how can we address comprehensive county-wide mitigation issues?
I'm just, I mean, I don't have a problem with them looking at it, I just still feel like at the end of the day that, I don't know how much the planning board knows about flooding, but I, I just feel like professionals are professionals and they're professionals for a reason, it's why they get paid. I just think that we should really, really look into bringing someone down and having a look at Wayne County and taking a serious look at what can be done, if anything can be done, whether, I mean, it's a retention problem, whether it's digging out the ditches, whatever it can be. What roads could be changed or, or, or built up or whatever to see that, okay, people in Dudley can get out, people in Montalos can get around, you know what I mean? Can get to the city for things that they need because during a flood, that's, that's, that's a major time, a lot of people go without. Most are going without lights, water, you know what I mean? So you need to be able to get to those things. So I, I just don't know how much the planning board is going to be able to do with that aspect, but that's why I say bringing in some professionals and doing it soon because we know the county's gonna flood again, it's not a question, we just don't know when. Could be next week, it could be 10 years from now, we, we just don't know. But I think planning is, is gonna be the main thing.
If, if you're, okay, if, if, I would like, it kind of brings If you're, okay, I would like to kind of bring this back to staff a little bit as well and let us have some conversation and then maybe we can bring you back some suggestions as well if that's fine.
Yep, we will.
Let me say one thing, we got a $900 million plus, $900 million plus business in Wayne County. If we don't fix it, if flood again, they're gone. They said they're not coming back, so we need to get on with it.
Uh, upon what committee?
Yes, sir. We're going to commit back two weeks ago and the Wayne, we need to reappoint Mr. Donnie Barnes as recommended by the Wayne Community College Board of Trustees. That's in form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor, all in favor, show sign of right hand. All opposed?
Also, the Council of Elder Adults to reappoint Ms. Nancy Delia and Mr. Charles Gibson as recommended by the Services and Agent Director Paula Edwards, that's in form of a motion.
I have a motion on the floor, all in favors, show sign of right hand. All opposed?
That's all we got.
Oh, I'm sorry. Because I've already done the Fremont Planning Board.
That was last week.
Okay.
Or two weeks ago.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Penney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next is our consent agenda and we did go over this extensively in our pre-agenda meeting. If there's any questions, if there's not, we would ask for...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion on the floor that we approve the consent agenda, any discussion? If none, all in favor, show sign of right hand. Motion carries.
And then next, we do have new business. Motion to approve Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan and Mr. Dustin Pittman is here, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnie, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I see some new faces, so I will do a brief bit of introduction, my name is Dustin Pittman, I'm the chairman of the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council is an arm of the county commissioners. We are responsible for overseeing $419,000 in funds that come into Wayne County from the Department of Public Safety through the Division of Adult Correction and Juvenile Justice. We distribute that money out to community-based programs to adjust, address juvenile concerns here in Wayne County with the primary aim of preventing juvenile crime. We find ourselves oftentimes responding to juvenile crime unfortunately, as prevention is very difficult. Before you, you should have three separate documents. The first is the executive summary, which will list out what we studied this past year through our risk and needs assessment and the priorities we determined that we had for funding. Down at the bottom of that, you will see the specific allocations to community-based programs. You should also have before you the funding plan, which is a simple spreadsheet listing out how we would distribute and ask the commissioners to approve distributing $419,454 in state funds that come down. And then finally, you should have the certification of membership, which is a state-required document that lists out that we are following requirements of the Department of Public Safety as it relates to these JCPC dollars. Certainly happy to answer any questions, but this is something that is, as I said, state money coming down, that is financed or funded through the county and distributed out through the county and through the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Any questions for Justin? If none, we appreciate your presentation today and...
Motion to approve.
I have a motion on the floor to approve this, any discussion? If none, I'll show favor, show sign of right hand. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for being here, Jeff.
Next, under new business, number two, discussion of a reentry council in Wayne County to work with individuals released from incarceration in Wayne County at the request of Commissioner Bevan Foster.
Yes, I spoke about this earlier as well. As you can see, when the sheriff came in here with the misuse, substance abuse misuse program, individuals in prison are having, with all kinds of issues. I mean, you have your mental health, you have your substance abuse issue, you have uneducated, you know, you come home, you have nowhere to stay, you have no job, there are a lot of different things going on with individuals. Some individuals may have been working when they went in, but when they get out, their job is gone, that housing is gone, their whole life is changed, you know, and having this council will help establish all those things to get those individuals back into society without, you know, a lot of times you come home to nothing, you start doing crime or something again. So to kind of sort of prevent that is something that, you know, this council will help and also it helps bring in funds to Wayne County for these individuals. So whether teaming up with Community College or any of the programs that the sheriff spoke about earlier, One to One or anyone at that matter would help also help these individuals. I have Mr. Mike Gardner here today, he's been working in the community as well with this. Mike, can you say a few words, speak on this a little bit?
How you doing? I want to thank everybody for allowing me to be here and speak to you. My name is Michael Gardner, I'm the founder and executive director of a new nonprofit organization called Triumph Community Alliance. And like Mr. Foster said, I help individuals that was, I kind of hate to say, you know, ex-offend, but justice involved. Once they come home to help find housing, job placement, transportation, there's really thirteen life stages that I try to address and a reentry council would be a great help. Me now, I'm doing everything myself, everything out of my pocket, I don't have the funds to hire staff members, but right now I have one house with six individuals. There've been, it's been about two months now, I have five individuals that have been put to work, they're working, two of the individuals actually were able to purchase a car in that short period of time. These were individuals that were homeless, so they wouldn't have anywhere else to go, individual that had been to prison many times. But now that they have this kind of a helping hand, it's not a handout, it's just a helping hand, a change of environment, they're able to change their lives in just this short amount of time. And if I could expand it a little bit, you know, I wouldn't just focus on the homeless, just go out into the community and try to prevent individuals from committing crimes just because they're trying to make a little bit of cash to pay a light bill, you know, pay a cell phone bill or whatever it may be. I was a correction officer for eighteen years, so I was able to speak to these individuals and see why, why do you commit these crimes? Why have, in the last five years, I've seen you five times? And, you know, majority of the time it comes back to, you know, hey, I had to do what I had to do to survive, you know, I didn't have any help, I didn't have any money, I had to get food, you know, I tried to get help, but the door's closing my face, you know, it's hard for a male to get, you know, help. Family members, you can only sleep on the couch for so long and with the barriers in place for, you know, a felon trying to find a job, it's kind of hard for them to find a job, so I help them, I go to the local case farms, Butterball, you know, just to help these individuals get jobs. And with the short amount of time, like I said, I have six individuals, five of them has been working for over two months. It is, I can just see the progress and if we have something that kind of compile resources and make it easier and accessible for, you know, individuals that have, just, you know, released from prison to access the resources, I think that that will be, I know that that would be a help for the community, their family, and all of us.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think what you're doing is valuable. When we look at the county as a whole, everybody is part of the cog of Wayne County.
Yes, sir.
And if you want the county of Wayne to succeed, you have to look at everybody, even those who have made mistakes in their past mistakes. So I commend you on that. I'd like to know a little bit more pertaining to what the council would be obligated to the reentry council, what, you know, what the processes would be if you have that, if you don't, you know.
Well, I'm compiling all the information right now, but there are counties around us, surrounding us, Nash County, Edcom County, Wilson County that have funded, now there's a difference between a reentry council county and a funded reentry council county. We have funded counties around us, so if a individual was released into, say, Wilson County, they will give them certain help, help with housing, help with transportation. You have someone in place that is kind of a liaison between the companies that actually talk to and get the people released from prison and cut that time out from release to employment. We don't really, we have the resources, but they're so spread out and you really have to know where you're going in order to get that help. A reentry council will bring all those resources together so that a individual can be referred to the reentry council, reentry council has all those resources right there, they can direct that person exactly to the person, the destination that they need. Right now, we really don't have that in place. Me, myself, I have compiled a list of resources, so if someone is referred to me, I can direct them to someone for job placement, someone for housing, and basically it's just people coming into the community that, you know, hey, I know you have a house for rent, I have a person that needs a house, he has a job, you know, so on and so forth, and just connecting people with that, the reentry council would be like a one-stop shop. You know, you can come in, you can be referred and then you can get what you need. And that is paramount to people's success, that's just reentry, because everybody don't have family. These guys have, for whatever reason, burned bridges with family or, you know, just family, they're just, you know, they're not there anymore, they had passed away, moved away, they don't have anyone. Every individual that I have would have been homeless if not for the organization, they wouldn't have anywhere to live, they would have been on the street and I talked to every one of them and they said, hey, you know, I don't know what I would have done, you know, I'm sure that I would have committed a crime to get back in prison just to have somewhere to live, some food to eat, things, things of that sort. But the reentry council will be the one-stop shop. We can tie all these resources together and make it easier for not just individuals that's released from prison, but, you know, make, you know, homeless in Wayne County, you know, you can come here and find job placement, housing, transportation, medical, even everything down to financial help, you know, it could be someone that just has a hard time budgeting. You can come in, you can get some education, you know, kind of get some help, some guidance for, you know, total, you know, life, just this life period.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One thing I would like to see, if you could just put a proposal together?
Okay.
And how you're going to interact with other agencies like the Sheriff's Substance Program, so on and so forth, and bring that to us or just submit it to us so we can take a look at it.
Okay.
But have a good game plan, I understand what you're saying, I'm pretty sure you have it all thought out, but I'd like to see a game plan.
Yes, sir.
For this, for me anyhow.
Yes, sir. I'm working with Sheriff right now. The, the program is a good program and I believe that it would definitely work, it's definitely needed, but you know, after the program, if you take somebody from an environment that's not conducive to sobriety, put them in this program, then put them right back in that environment.
And that's why I want to see how are, how the pieces fit together. You know, our community for what you're doing is really a good effort that we need.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Gardner?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're a 501(c)(3),
Yes, ma'am.
You said you were nonprofit. Have you actively sought grants for this? I mean...
I have, but because I'm so small, it's kind of difficult, it's difficult. I really need a, maybe a bigger organization, someone that's more established because I've only been in existence now for about two months. So it's kind of without the data, it's kind of hard to receive grants, you know, they really want to see results, you know, and that's basically what it was. But I am actively seeking and, you know, working with a couple of grant writers to identify grants and pursue them. Yes, ma'am.
I think that continuing to work with Sheriff Pierce and hopefully bringing everything back to the table and coming up with that plan like Commissioner Freeman said, will help us all and, you know, and then finally we can, hopefully we can move on to seeing about bringing this reentry council and creating one if it's beneficial to, everything's going on, all the moving components, because Sheriff Pierce has the substance abuse misuse program right now and, I mean, he's in charge of the jail, releasing people all the time, you know, and I'm pretty sure he has contacts with the prisons as well, with people coming back to Wayne County, because some come to the jail first and then get released.
That's right.
It's a whole lot of different things moving on, moving around, so I think building, continue to build that relationship with him and then bringing that plan to us and as soon as, whenever you can and we can all hopefully get together with him and come up with the best things and the best options to help move this process along, because I believe we all want to help and make a difference here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I had something more.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Also, you know, we have a lot of boards, we have a lot of boards, we have the GWTA board, maybe you can, you know, try to schedule with the GWTA director as far as transportation, you know, because what you're doing, you know, they can probably give you a stipend, you know, as far as tickets so that men can get around to handle their priorities, you know, so just something to think of as well.
Yes, sir.
Wages too, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And don't get discouraged if people...
And then number three, under new business, motion to award EMS ambulance remount bid to Southeastern Specialty Vehicles, the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, that is on page eighty-two and you can see the bid tabulation sheets and staff would like to recommend approving it to Southeast Specialty.
I have a motion on the floor that we approve this, any other discussion? If none, I'll show sign of right hand. Approved. Mr. Gurley? Commissioner Gurley? Okay, County Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to remind the board and also the public, we still have our vaccine center open on Busman Street. Again, first shots are Monday and Friday, second shots are Tuesday and Thursday. Please, anyone and everyone sixteen and above, again, if you're under eighteen, bring a pair, but if you're sixteen or above, please come and get a shot, so we have them available. We're really becoming the central location within the county, a lot of the shots are coming back to us, so we have shots, we need to give them out. So whatever you can do to encourage your family, friends, whoever, to get the shots, we want to encourage people to get their shots.
Busman Building on Dixie Trail.
Busman Building on Dixie Trail, yes, sir. I did want to mention that we have started the budget process, we're into the second week of it, working with our department heads now, going through their budget and they're making a presentation to the management team, so we're, should be through that at the end of this week and then we should be getting you the manager's recommended budget, I think it's, is it the first or second meeting in?
Second.
Second meeting in May? And then from that point, we will set budget workshops and have it become your budget, not the manager's budget, so. But that's all I have and again, lunch today at Maxwell Center with Farm Bureau at noon.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Board of Commissioners Committee reports. Commissioner Barbara A. Cutt?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank City of Goldsboro for meeting with us last week to discuss the problems we had with the sewer, how we were going to build on some items, and we also discussed, you know, what benefits us will benefit them because of the volume that they're receiving. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Crumpler and Chip on... on their success in getting the point across because sometimes people don't understand. But I think we need to continue on this because as they stated, you know, if we go into moratorium and they're very close at it in these past three or four months, and if we continue to get rain floods like we have, it's going to be a problem. And I think they said, what, 110?
Around 110 a couple of...
Yeah, and once you go into the 80% range, the state starts looking at you. So we, as good stewards, we also got to slow down our systems also. And hopefully, we can take some of this American money that we're going to be getting and work on this. I think the city has also said they were going to do the same. So hopefully, we can get a handle on this. It's small towns, countywide, citywide, sewer is a big issue in this state now. And it's really beginning to be recognized by our legislature and everybody. And we wanted to recognize a couple places that we have sewer meters because the volume is just absolutely tremendous from the water readings versus sewer readings and anybody that's ever worked in it. Like in February of '21, one of our facilities, the difference in the water meter and the sewer meter was 52,387,000 gallons. Another one, another business was 384,217 gallons. So you can see the money that's being lost by the county by not being able to build by sewer meters. So like I said, we got to stay on top of this. And I did want to thank the city and the county for getting this together. Thank you, Chip and Craig. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Doherty? I think over the last year, many of us have recognized just how important it is for a very viable health department. I want everybody just to think for just a moment, what in the world Wayne County would have done if we did not have a viable health department? Sometimes our departments are overlooked. And I think our health department has been overlooked. I was at our health board meeting and looking at the upcoming budget and was shocked to hear the report that we have lost 20%, 20% of our personnel. And the question is, why would we lose that many person, personnel, of our valuable personnel? And this is not only just those individuals working as data entry. We're talking about nurse practitioners. We're talking about skilled people that we need to be able to operate a viable health department. And their exit interviews that were done, you know what the number one item was? Is the facility. They're saying other counties surrounding us have got such nice facilities. And I'm sitting here working with mold and mildew and just on and on and on. As you, many of you know, I've been advocating for new facilities. And I'm just saying, it's time. We're going to have to address the facility. We can no longer afford to lose that many of our valuable personnel. So that said, those are my only comments of the day. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
No comments.
Okay. Commissioner Fox?
I'll let you talk about the health department.
No comments? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Horace?
Basically, I want folks to realize, even though we have the vaccinations going on, there's an uptick in COVID here in Wayne County again. So continue to wear your mask, social distance and so on and so forth. I know it's an individual call on that, but again, we're all getting vaccinated and yet, we're still seeing an uptick again. So just please be careful out there. That's it for me.
Commissioner Gerley?
You're good?
Yep.
All right. Does anyone else have anything?
Commissioner Doherty, you know, about the mold and stuff. You know, we had a problem at the Fremont Library. We've had to close it down again. That's a fine example of breathing unhealthy air. And when we were over there, I seen the same thing. I mean, it's terrible. I mean, we need to start looking at that very seriously. And if we have to close the library down for just the mold they have and because people were feeling bad, just think about what we're going on at the hospital, with all hospitals I got.
Anyone else? I don't have any comments today. Do I have a motion? Anyone else, Mr. Parker, Mr. Neal, anybody got anything else?
Close session.
All right, we do need to go back in closed session.
Purpose of talking to your attorneys about attorney-client program.
I make a motion to go in the closed session.
Do I, okay, I have a motion to go back in closed session. All in favor, show a sign of right hand.